Hello and welcome candidates and audience as well as those watching at home to the candidate forum for City of Ramsey, City Mayor and City Council Member-at-Large and for Council Member in wards one, three and four. This will be a two-part forum for those watching at home or online via the web so you can choose which candidates you wish to see. The first segment will be the forum for City of Ramsey Mayor and Ramsey City Council Member-at-Large and the second will be for Ramsey City Council Members for wards one, three and four. You can find out which ward you live in by going to the Minnesota Secretary of State's website. My name is Sarah Berg McConville of the League of Women Voters Anoka Blaine and Coon Rapids area. I'm a resident Champlin and so have no conflicts in moderating this forum and cannot vote for these candidates. All candidates for these races were invited to participate in the forum and are here. The League of Women Voters does not support or oppose any political parties or candidates for office. The League does very much want you all to vote in all elections and hopes to help everyone feel more informed with their vote by putting on these forums with our candidates. Keep in mind that many of the questions may be repetitive as all of these candidates are running to represent the City of Ramsey and we want all of them to be able to express their vision for your city. Your candidates for City of Ramsey Mayor are John Leturnal and Richard Wolfe. We will begin with three questions. All candidates received in advance of the forum, these will be followed by audience questions. Candidates will alternate who answers each question first and one minute will be allowed to each candidate to answer each question. The candidates will be allowed to finish the last statement they are on. Please hold your applause until the end of the forum and let's be respectful to all our candidates. So we'll start with a question. The first question will go to John Leturnal. John, please describe your background and community involvement.
All right. First of all, thank you Sarah for moderating tonight and to the League of Women Voters for putting this forum together. It's a great opportunity for I think the community to get to know the candidates a little bit better and so I'm thrilled to be here. I'm taking a look at my background and just thinking it through a little bit and I'm a 31-year resident of Ramsey, I'm a 20-year business owner. I characterize myself as being a lifelong learner, a middle kid of six, a servant leader, a mentor and coach. I also take a look at a little bit about some of the things that I've done and I struggle sharing the list of community involvement because I never really measure my life and how much I've done, but I measure it more in how much of a difference I've made. And so I'll share with you some of the things that I've been able to be part of and the ways that I've really been able to serve and reach out to my community. So I've been a member of Ramsey Rotary, I'm on Ramsey Lions, a member of the Anoka Area Chamber of Commerce, I'm a community volunteer for Happy Days, Ramsey Business Expo, Riverfest, Game Fair, St. Stevens Church, many local churches, Ramsey Elementary, Anoka High School, PAC Charter School, Anoka Technical College, Minnesota Renaissance School, RYAA, now the Thrashing Show. I've actually touched every corner of this community with involvement and I've enjoyed every single minute of it.
Thank you. And Richard Wolfe, same question to you, describe your background and community involvement.
Thank you Sarah. I also want to thank the Women, the League of Women Voters for this opportunity and you all for showing up tonight. I've been a government teacher for 24 years. I worked as an administrator. I have multiple college degrees and I'm working on my doctor in educational leadership. I volunteered for the Anoka Ramsey Athletic Association, the Boys and Girls Club, the Little League of Baseball and Softball and Special Olympics. My family and I participated in programs called the ELF Program where we build bicycles for underprivileged children. We also provide tutoring after school and we also have animals that we use for therapy if kids are needed. As a teacher, I require my students to get involved in the community and I ask them to find a way that they can change their society. My students have built benches and walking paths, built houses for wood ducks, cleaned the Rum River and connected puppies from reservations to people that would adopt them. My students take this very seriously and are extremely proud of their accomplishments. I have spent my career volunteering and building relationships and have inspired a generation of kids to make a positive influence in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Wolfe, the second question will begin with you. What are your qualifications for serving as Ramsey City Mayor and why are you seeking office?
Okay, thank you. I have run a successful sports business and I've worked as a teacher and administrator. I've gone to college and accomplished all that, but if that's what we're asking that makes you qualified, I completely disagree. I don't believe the mayor should be the person that sits in committees and works with organizations only. I think the role of the mayor goes well beyond City Hall and council chambers. There's a current disconnect between city council and our residents and we feel like we're not being listened to. If they were, they would have heard that some of our neighborhoods are in desperate need of sidewalks so their children can get to school safely. How about the stop signs so the kids can play in their neighborhoods also? What about developing a safe passage for schools? If they were listening, they would not be wasting time on this bridge to nowhere that people keep talking about that's going to cost more than $3 million. Being a mayor is about being a neighbor who checks in from time to time just to see how things are going and how he can help. It's not just sitting in committees. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard Wolfe. And then the second question back to you, John Leturnal. What are your qualifications for serving as Ramsey City Mayor and why are you seeking office?
I'm gonna, the end of the question is why am I seeking office and the answer to that is so that I can continue to give back to the community that I love so much and have served for so many years. The reasons and the ways that I want to do this or the way that I think I'm qualified is again, it's about the level and depth and breadth of my connection to this community. And it's been, it's been six years on council, it was 11 years on the Economic Development Authority, it was the 20 years as a businessperson that I think really put me in a position to be prepared to be able to do this kind of work and to engage with our community in a way that it needs to be engaged with. We're a young community yet, we're growing, quite a bit of dynamics that are in play. There's a lot of material that needs to be managed and reviewed on a constant basis and I think that my connection to the community and the ways that I've learned to interact and be part of something bigger allows me to continue to have those discussions with our residents in a way that's meaningful for everyone. We're not able to simply look at one issue at any time. We are looking at multiple issues. We have over 300 projects that are on our planning docket right now and those are the projects that we're managing on a daily basis and trying to make it or allow for it to fit to the residents' needs as best we can.
Okay, thank you. And then the third question is going to you first. What are your short and long-term goals for the City of Ramsey?
Great, there's, like I said, it's a dynamic community, there's a lot of growth occurring right now and everyone's experiencing that and seeing a lot of change in our community. Along with the change comes a lot of uncertainty and the uncertainty I think is an issue that we need to address in the short term. The uncertainty is probably has more to do with better communication or additional communication. It has a lot to do more with education. How do we inform our community as to what's going on? What are the best ways for it to reach them? Right now, one of our best vehicles is the Ramsey Resident, but we need to use other means to be able to make sure that we're communicating what's happening with us. So in the short term, we're also looking for shops, restaurants, trails, splash pads, great places for our neighbors and our friends and in our community to hang out and enjoy each other. We're really concerned about Highway 10 and what's going on there and the transportation needs. Road maintenance is another issue that we're grappling with right now and trying to understand how to be able to do that. Long-term, rich economic growth, this will support the tax base. Continued vision that looks to solve the problems that are approaching us such as Public Works Office, Mississippi River Crossing and the Ramsey of 2050.
All right, thank you. Richard Wolfe, same question to you. What are your short and long-term goals for the City of Ramsey?
Thank you. My short-term goals are pretty easy. I want to review all the proposed projects and list them by their greatest needs. I want to review all expenses to see and to make sure that we are getting max value for our taxes. I want to make sure that we take care of our pathways so our kids can get to school safely. I want to make a neighborhood safe by putting stop signs so we can slow down traffic. I want to stop wasteful spending and that includes subsidies for developers. I want to stop building high-density apartments in the core. My long-term goals, I would like the core to be the heart of the city. I feel we're missing out on that right now. We need to focus on building a natural space, a park, water, paths, but not high-density apartments or industrializing it. It is one of the beautiful things that we have. I want to find a way to build our community center with gyms and classrooms, a splash pad and a pool. I want to develop a partnership with the Anoka Ramsey Athletic Association and its traveling programs. This is an organization that can bring traffic into our city by allowing traveling teams to host weekends. I want to, that's able to bring thousands of people into here into Ramsey yearly. And I want to be able to bring attractive destinations like businesses, restaurants, sorry.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, Richard Wolfe, this question comes from the audience, you'll be the first to be able to answer. What is your plan to pay for road improvements in Ramsey?
Some of the problems that I think we're dealing with right now is we're just misappropriating our funds. We have a budget, we need to stick to the budget. The most important thing that I see is that we're trying to spend things that we don't absolutely need and the roads are extremely important. From my understanding, we have $70 million in road improvements, but we're not addressing it. We're spending our money again on projects that aren't needed, pathways, a bridge to nowhere and we're not focusing on the things that we need. We also need to learn to balance the budget. We need to treat the taxpayers' money like it is extremely important and not just wasting it away. Stick to the budget, we need to stop raising taxes and we need to develop some sort of escrow account where we can put money aside every year directly for roads. It was done in the past. They used to put more than a million dollars every year for roads. Where has that gone? We need to be able to stick to a budget so that way we can take care of all our roads. Thank you.
Thank you. And same question, back to you, John Leturnal. What is your plan to pay for road improvements?
Thank you. I've actually had an opportunity to participate in the plan for the last six years. Soon after I was elected to office in 2013, we started to talk about that issue of roads, realizing that there were a number of hundred miles of roads that were under great stress as they were not being taken care of and maintained over the course of their life. We acquired what we found to be the value of that at to be $30 million worth of road repairs that needs to happen and we've scheduled that repair to occur over the next 20 years. This was an issue that was not being addressed by city councils prior to us, they were kicking that can down the road. There were no funds set aside for road maintenance, there were no plans basically in place to be able to take care of that. So we're in the middle of a five-year plan right now to evaluate how roads are being funded. That plan is now up for review and that'll be how we'll continue to move forward in the next year or two. We do not necessarily like the current assessment plan and we want to talk about other ways to fund the necessary repairs that have to be done on our infrastructure here in the community.
Okay, thank you. And then John Leturnal, this question will go to you, again from the audience. What are your plans on expanding Ramsey's tax base?
I think I mentioned this in my opening statement and one of the ways that we can expand our tax base and probably one of the most efficient and most productive ways to do that for a community is through economic development. And so we have had a long history of very successful economic development. This means places like manufacturing firms, business firms that come here and open up and conduct their, their manufacturing and business in the community. And so over the last 30 years, we've built out several large commercial parks. Those commercial parks have served our tax base very well and that is, that is the key right there on how to really solidify our tax base. And so the plan now is to continue to try to do what we need to do to create the infrastructure that's appropriate for those particular types of community assets to come forward. Currently, we are looking at a new site that's over on the west side of town, it's called the Bunker Hill, Bunker Lake Industrial Park and that's a spec project that's coming online right now and it's, it's actually filling as fast as they're building it. And so we'll look for that in the future.
Okay, I am just going to remind everyone a minute to answer the questions and then I'm going to have Richard Wolfe, same question to you. What are your plans on expanding Ramsey's tax base?
Thank you. The real question we need to ask right now is where's our taxes going to? I know there's been talk about this 20-year plan and the roads are going to, you know, we got this developed in 20 years, but we haven't seen anything in the six years this council's been together. The roads that have been repaired has been county-led. So where exactly is our money going to? We don't see it as a people. I go door-to-door and I'm talking to a lot of people and they're frustrated because they feel that their taxes are being misused. Where, where can we find a way to balance our budget so we can go back to the roads? It is the summer and we have no road construction going on right now, but yet we talk about safety. We talk about roads being a primary concern of ours, but we're just not doing it. So how can we expand our tax base? If we're going to continue to build the apartments, we're going to drive people out. That is not how we're going to expand the tax base. We can do it if we find ways to get businesses in, but we don't have a very good reputation in Ramsey of treating businesses with respect. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Richard Wolfe, this question will go to you first. What commissions have you been a part of in the Ramsey community or what type of volunteering have you done?
I have not been a part of any commission. I spend my time on the ground working with kids. I feel that is much more appropriate. It's the only way you get to see the, the future. I like spending time with them, I get to know their families, I get to know them on a personal level. As a teacher, I get to spend so much more time in the classroom with them after school when they're doing their projects. I've spent my time volunteering behind walls and found that nothing ever gets done. I'd much rather spend my time out in the community where I could cause an impact, where I can influence the, the community, where I can make a difference that way. Sitting behind walls and making plans to me isn't just enough. I've been here for six years and I have volunteered of my time as much as I could do, whether it's sports or tutorials or after-school programs, creating a, an organization at school for kids to get involved politically. Okay, that's where I feel we need to focus on. But the future is with the kids, not sitting in a room. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then same question to you, John Leturnal. What commissions have you been a part of in the Ramsey community or what type of volunteering have you done?
All right, thank you. Unlike my opponent, I've been very involved in the community and been able to share that with you during the first part of my comments today, but I served for 11 years on the Economic Development Authority during a period of time where we had quite a bit of development occurring and that was a very good experience, a great place to learn a lot about how city government fits together and how things get done inside of a community like this. I also have served on the economic, or the Environmental Protection Board and that board actually comes from a very pioneer version of it, which was the horse board before we grew into a city that no longer was predominantly horse-driven. And we look at economic issues and we look at the impact that econo, or environmental issues and the issues that environmental things have on our development and how we can maintain the environmental integrity. I've also served on Youth First, I've been on the Finance Committee and then if you were just to refer to the list from my first comments, you'll hear about the other things I've done inside the community and have enjoyed it and am very proud of it.
Okay, thank you. And then the question will go to you first again, John Leturnal. There's been a few questions about businesses, so I'm going to try to combine a little bit. What are your plans for making Ramsey attractive to retail business that might be considering opening here?
Thank you. So first of all, I want to maybe open up with the idea that, that the city can play a role in attracting businesses, but the city cannot want businesses to come. Businesses have to want to be here. And the result of what makes those decisions possible for businesses is more about if a business can survive. So as a business owner, you'll look at a marketplace or an area that you want to open up and you'll determine whether that business is viable there. And so what we need to do in this community is create an environment where businesses want to come and they can see that there is an opportunity for them to be successful here. So the way that we're doing that is by providing an opportunity for the first part of that equation to be filled in and that's customers. We're allowing for people to come to our community and live here so that we can support a market demand that would allow for businesses to come. In addition to that, as a community or as a, as a government agency, we're going to put the infrastructure in place to make sure that it's easier for businesses to locate here. We'll make sure that all the public amenities are in place and that we're open to any, any suggestions or any way that we can help them in a lot of different ways.
Okay, thank you. And then Richard Wolfe, same question to you. What are your plans for making Ramsey attractive to retail business that might be considering opening here?
Okay, thank you. The first thing I want to mention is, you know, businesses are going to come when they start to realize that we're going to treat them with respect. We've had businesses come in here and I've been talking to them and they feel that they're being charged all kinds of fees and taxes and it may not be city council's fault, but they're, they're getting slapped with all kinds of excess costs. One of the businesses on 10 had to do a sign for $10,000. Another business off to the side, they've been reprimanded several times because they had signs that were not up to code. One here on the core, they had gotten a $1,800 sign quoted for them, instead they had to pay for $4,300 for the sign. And they had asked if they could do it on two sides of a wall instead of one. We can't attract businesses if we're not treating the ones that we have here with respect. We need to be able to do that. We need to go out, find businesses that are willing to come, but we got to change the way we're doing business. We've got to make it not only financially lucrative, but we need to make it appealing that, that so they know that we care about them, right? The business that we have here, we have to treat with respect. The more traffic we get into the city, the more likely we're going to get businesses here in Ramsey. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. This is again about business, but also about homeowners. So back to you, Richard Wolfe. I am, I have heard, this is from an audience member, that Ramsey is thinking of adding a franchise fee to every homeowner and business to pay for roads. Are you in favor of a franchise fee to pay for roads?
The, the problem that I see right now is in our city, we've already raised taxes 30% in the last four to five years. Looking at the committee meetings, they're estimating they're going to raise it another 25% in the next five years. On top of that, they're spending money on a marketing firm so they can sell us on the idea of that franchise fee. It seems to me that we're financially in a position where we can no longer afford to sit back anymore. We're going to have to do something aggressive to pay for these roads. That also means looking at the budget a little more strenuously and making sure that we're putting things that we absolutely need first. That's going to be tough decisions. At the moment, I don't think the franchise fee is something that we want as a city, but because of the way we've neglected the roads and how desperate they are, I believe it's become a necessity in order for us to get these roads done. Thank you.
Thank you. Same question to you, John Leturnal. Ramsey is thinking of adding a franchise fee to every homeowner and business to pay for roads. Are you in favor of a franchise free fee?
Excellent, I appreciate that. I think we all can agree that the situation that our roads are in is pretty dire. It's, there's quite a bit of a, quite a bit of a nut to crack in order to get that straightened out. There's a big problem with our roads and the maintenance. The way that we're paying for those roads is going to have to affect all of us in some way, shape or form. These are our city streets and we're all going to be responsible for those roads. How we pay for them is open for discussion. And I will tell you right now that we are using a method that's primarily around assessments. We are not exactly sure as a council and a community if that's the right way for us to approach it. So we are looking at alternate methods to pay for roads. Will it be a franchise fee? Perhaps. Will it be another form of way, another form of payment? Perhaps. I don't know and the reality of it is, is that it's not up to me, it's up to us as a community to decide the best, how best to do that and that's what we'll have discussions about.
Okay, thank you. You'll be first up for the next question. With city taxes going up in recent years and a looming road repair crisis, can you answer why, or do you believe that building parks and bridges in the center of Ramsey is a good thing or not?
I think that we need to be very careful about how we spend our money. And I think we need to understand that the way that we make choices on how to spend money and/or create amenities for our community has to be based on what our community wants. I don't think that this council is in any position prepared or willing to make choices that are against what this community wants. And so could I tell you that roads and bridges and parks and splash pads and new buildings and infrastructure to support such growth is important? Yes. Do I believe that we need to potentially look at raising taxes to do that? That could be yes as well, but it'll be based more on what we as a community decide we want to do with the community that we live in.
Okay, thank you. Same question to you, Richard Wolfe. With city taxes going up in recent years and a looming road repair crisis, do you think building parks and bridges in the center of Ramsey is a good idea or not?
No, I don't think it's a good idea at all. I think part of the problem is that city council, they're not going out to the community as much and seeing the effects of their decisions. I've talked to older people that are older the age of seven to 75, that they're paid off their house, but they can't afford the property taxes on it. We're driving them away. We can't keep making decisions without seeing the effects of it. We've got to get a city council more involved in the city. These taxes, yes, 30%, they might go up another 25%, but what's killing people is the addition of an assessment. In my house, I was paying $2,000 a year when we first moved in property tax. This next year, I'm going to pay $3,100 in property tax. On top of that, they've added a $1,500 assessment for my road repair. Some people can afford that, many cannot. So if we're going to keep building these parks and we're going to neglect our older generation, we're going to drive them out. You really want to see what we're doing? Go out to the community, go door-to-door, go see the people and you can see firsthand the damages these taxes are causing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to switch it up here and Richard, this question goes to you first. How do you feel about investing more money in early childhood education?
In ch, early childhood education?
Yes.
Okay. I think it's a fabulous idea if any way we can do it. We're talking about the future of our society. The only thing that can happen is positive stuff. It's been proven that the more you invest in the kids at their earlier age, that the higher their accomplishments are, the more likely they're going to go to a college, to a four-year college and get a bachelor's degree or a master's degree. I can't see how a city cannot get involved with that, which is one of the reasons why I don't see why the city's not more involved in organizations like the Anoka Ramsey Athletic Association. Their sole purpose is to invest their money into kids that are playing sports. We also don't spend any time investing our, our resources with kids that are in our community that might do well at high school. We have, we have some outstanding kids that are graduating and are accomplishing some awesome stuff, but we don't ever acknowledge it. It doesn't take a whole lot, it doesn't take a whole lot of money. It just takes us being involved. And if we're going to invest with the kids, I start as early as possible. The more we can put towards them, the better we're going to be as a society. Thank you.
Thank you. And John Leturnal, same question to you. How do you feel about investing more money in early childhood education?
I am an absolute supporter of early childhood education, just as much as I'm a supporter of adults with disabilities or a supporter of elderly or perhaps homeless people. There are many, many causes that I believe are very, very important and that I would definitely want to support if I could. I really ask the question of what is the role of our, of our city government? And our city government definitely has a role in all of these areas, but I'm not sure I exactly know how to draw a straight line between the particular investments and money that are needed for these type of programs because there are so many and I don't know that we could address all of them equally or with some kind of level of support that would make a significant difference. And so I'd like to say that the government should probably continue to focus in on building infrastructure, making the community safe and just building the community that we need as, as a whole.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to have time, I think, for one more question and then we'll do the wrap-up. Mr. Leturnal, I have heard, this again is an audience member, I have heard several times throughout this campaign about the bridge to nowhere. Please explain what it is and whether or not you support it. Please explain what it is and whether or not you support it.
All right. I believe the reference is to the Mississippi River Skyway. That is one of 300 projects that's on our CIP list. That particular bridge is a pedestrian crossway that comes off of our skyway that goes to the train station. It extends over Highway 10, and it lands into the Anoka County Regional Park and the Mississippi National Park that runs 75 miles, beginning in the city of Ramsey. It connects to the Mississippi River Trail, which is a bike trail that's, that spans the distance of the Mississippi River from Lake Attasca to New Orleans. This Bridge to Nowhere is being funded primarily right now, is being funded exclusively by grant dollars, but it is in a very, very, very preliminary, preliminary stage. It's not even a project that exists in our radar. It's years out, and it is only one of 300 projects that we review on a regular basis.
Okay, thank you. Same question, back to you, Richard Wolff. This residence has heard several times throughout the campaign about the Bridge to Nowhere. Please explain what it is and whether or not you support it.
I do not support it at all. It is the bridge that they've been talking about, like John said, that's going to go over 10 to get us over to the Mississippi. It's a waste to me because it hasn't been thought out clearly. If you're talking about a bridge so people can use on their bikes, are we talking about kids coming up through the parking ramp so they can get to the bridge? Do you want young kids on that parking ramp or people are flying down? We're going to have accidents. I understand there's an elevator, okay? How many bikes can you fit into the elevator before they start tearing up that elevator? Just so we can get to the other side of 10. Is there not better things that we can spend our money on? Now, I understand there's grant money, but the grant money also has a stipulation. It could be used anywhere in the city for safe passes, passages for kids. We're still responsible for 20%, 20% of the cost. So if it's 3.2 million, we're still responsible for 20% of that. Okay? So if we look at all our paths that we have, it goes all throughout Ramsey, but some of them are on the outskirts of the neighborhoods, which are fantastic, and then they cut through major roads and cut through the cities or the neighborhoods, because it's creating an unsafe environment. I am not in support of this at all. I'd rather use our money for more safe roads. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Finally, we're going to give each candidate one minute for closing statements. We will start with Richard Wolff. You have one minute.
First of all, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters again. This is an awesome setup. It gives us a great opportunity to share our thoughts and get out to as many people as possible. And I want to thank all you all for coming. I know you guys busy, got busy things to do, but this is important. I know you have a big responsibility this November. You have a vote for mayor. You can either vote for the way things were going, or you can vote for change. I've known John for just a little bit, and I know some of the people on the council, and I have nothing, no disrespect to any of them. I just don't feel they're doing enough. I don't think that their priorities are set in the right spots. I want to change a lot of things about the city, but I want to do it by showing the people that we care, that we're connected, that we seek them out, that we're going to go door-to-door to find out what it is that they need, what is that they want. I believe your mayor has to be the biggest cheerleader. If your mayor's making excuses about why we can't do this or why we can't do that, then we need to find somebody else. Your mayor is the person that's going to go door-to-door, from business to business, selling our city in any particular way, any possible way to get people to come here. There are a lot of people that do want to come here. There's some businesses that want to come here, but they want to make sure that they're coming under the right circumstances. I am going to go out and I'm going to talk to those businesses. So what I'm asking right now is for you, please, in November, to come out, vote for me, Richard Wolff, for mayor of Ramsey. Thank you.
Thank you. And John Letourneau, you have one minute to speak to your voters.
Thank you. I'd like to say that it's been a humbling experience to serve on the city council for the last six years. I take a lot of pride in that, and I want to thank everyone for their continued support. It was wonderful to first come onto the scene with such an overwhelming degree of confidence in the voting public. Almost 60% of the vote went to me that first election year. Second time that I ran, I ran unopposed. That was amazing. That's a great affirmation from the community, and I want to thank you for that. I showed up pretty well in the primary this time, and I think that, that again, continues to show the affirmation. It tells me that I am listening. It doesn't tell me to stop listening, so I want to continue to do that. I want to continue to do what I need to do in regards to the advocacy for the city of Ramsey. I'm a resident, along with you. I understand the challenges around the decisions that are being made. I'm doing it with you in my mind every single time I sit in that, on this seat. I think always about what I would want from a community, and this is the community that I want to be a part of. Thank you very much for your support here today. Thank you very much for your support on November 4th, when you're having an opportunity to choose your next mayor. I'd love it to be John Letourneau, and I'd love to continue to do this work for you. Thanks. Ramsey's a great place to live.
Thank you to both of you. Now, we will have Chris Riley, uncontested at-large city council member, and he will give, he will have about five minutes to discuss his background, qualifications, and his vision for the city of Ramsey. Chris?
Hi there, thanks a lot. She said, "I'm running unopposed," and didn't have to do this, but I thought I'd at least take a couple minutes. It won't be five. Thanks, everybody. As I said, I'm running unopposed, but that's because I've already run one, two elections this year, a special primary and a special election. Little bit about me, I've lived in Ramsey for 23 years with my wife Brenda. We've raised three kids. I attended St. Cloud State University and Anoka High School. I'm a certified public accountant. I'm accredited in business valuation, and I'm certified in financial forensics. I think these are some skills that are very handy and come in very importantly for the city of Ramsey for budgeting taxes. It's one of my strengths. I've been on city council for six years. As I said, I was recently elected for the at-large position. I currently serve on the Economic Development Authority for the city, and I'm also on the Public Works Committee. The issues that I think are the biggest for the city right now is I want to work toward low taxes. I want to increase the tax base, and specifically by selling the land in the core, the, the center of Ramsey here that we're in. And one important thing to me is I want no more apartments, and that is until the development of retail and restaurants has caught up. The number of apartments we have here now, we're always in the plan. It's just the apartments have built first. They followed the market. That's what the developers have brought to us. So I want to put a halt to apartments until our businesses that have been planned all along and restaurants have caught up and build this out the way that was always planned. I guess lastly, I want to thank the residents for putting trust in me and placing me on the city council. One last thing is, I would implore people to, A, get out and vote, but also, reach out to the city council, reach out to your members, and let us know what you think. I'm always surprised about how few people do reach out, and then, at the same time, say that they don't know what's going on with the city. It's kind of a frustrating back and forth. It requires me to ask them what they think, which is a perfectly fine way, but people have opinions. Reach out and let us know. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Chris. League of Women Voters thanks all candidates here today for speaking to voters about issues and for running for office. Thank you, audience members, for listening and participating with great questions. Thank you to QCTV for partnering to make it possible for all those who could not make it tonight view these forums. Our democracy depends on citizen involvement. If you are interested in League, please check out LWVABCMN.org. Women, men, and young adults over the age of 16 are all welcome and encouraged to join. Remember, the general election is Tuesday, November 6th. You can vote at your city offices starting September 21st through November 5th, or in person at your precinct polling place, November 6th. You can find out information on voting options, or check out the Precinct Finder for your polling place in the Minnesota Secretary of State's website and choose my sample ballot. Your voice is your vote. Please vote. Have a great night, and let's give all these candidates a round of applause.